My right is the ten car road, I hear you. Are we, I'm ready to get started now. We will fix our technical difficulties and I should think we should be good.
All right, we're all set.
Hearing will now resume with session two. As stated earlier, the purpose of this hearing is to hear verbal statements as to whether discharges from the proposed project would or would not violate the Bad River Band's water quality requirements. And if conditions are available and necessary to ensure compliance. The remaining time of this hearing is devoted to hearing verbal statements from members of the public. I ask you to please note and respect the posted ground rules. Each speaker will be heard in order of registration and will be giving up to three minutes to provide their statement. After which the microphone will be turned off and the next registered speaker will be invited to speak. There will be no yielding of time. The Corps will not respond to questions or comments. And no cross examination will be allowed. Thank you and welcome.
Good afternoon. A quick reminder and a few important ground rules to help ensure a respectful and efficient process. Each registered speaker will be given three minutes to provide their statements and a timer will be visible. And the microphone will be turned off once time has elapsed. Please refrain from using any profanity or engaging in any disruptive behavior. If a speaker is not present or does not respond when called, they will lose their position. If time permits, we will invite you to speak again later at the end. With that, we will begin with verbal statements of today's hearing. And we are now going to be calling Terrence McGowan to speak and please unmute your microphone before the timer begins. It looks like they are not here, so we are going to be moving on to our next speaker, Corey Gahl. Can you please unmute your microphone as we are about to start the time?
Hello, my name is Corey Gahl and I'm the president of the Wisconsin Pipe Trades Association. Let me first thank the US Army Corps of Engineers for allowing me to speak today in favor of the line five relocation project. The Wisconsin Pipe Trades Association represents eight local unions and nearly 10,000 Wisconsin workers. Our members build and maintain everything from fire sprinkler systems to medical gas lines to gas and oil pipelines. Our pipeline welders spend years perfecting their craft with a rigorous five-year training and testing process before becoming a journeyman pipeline worker. Our union welders, those who will weld the line five relocation project are some of the most skilled and highly trained welders on the planet. Both our members, as well as the other three building trades who will work on this project, take very seriously the safety of our environment around our work sites. Not only because it is the right thing to do, but also because many of our workers live in and near the project area. None of our members, myself included, would support this project if we didn't think it could be done in a manner that protected the environment. As you may know, late last year, the Wisconsin DNR concluded a nearly five-year review of this project and came to the conclusion that it can be built in a manner that protects our waterways. In addition to the construction techniques Enbridge has proposed that will minimize environmental impact, the Wisconsin DNR added 225 conditions to ensure the environment was protected. The conditions include many measures that address the concerns of the Bad River, that the Bad River Tribe has brought up. The Wisconsin DNR is requiring independent monitoring of the construction project to ensure the conditions and the required construction practices are followed. It should be worth noting that the Bad River Tribe has completed or has proposed numerous projects that use many of the same construction techniques they questioned in their February 11th letter to the EPA and US Army Corps. In addition, their attempts to stop these construction techniques, which use, which they use on their own reservation are expansive, covering an area many times more than the Bad River Reservation itself. Should these arguments be applied to their other projects? Or apply to other projects, then Northwest Wisconsin would become a construction dead zone with little ability for instructor, infrastructure development of any kind. Well, I understand the policies surrounding line five relocation project. The politics surrounding line five relocation project, it has become clear that efforts to stop this project have moved far beyond its actual construction and into a national debate about our energy, our nation's energy future. Well, I can appreciate the desire to transition energy sources. That is not the issue in front of us. It's whether this project can be completed in a manner that protects the environment and waterways, then I say yes. I see you move forward with the permits to allow line pipe project to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Next we'll hear from Chad Ward. Please unmute your microphone before we begin the timer.
Hello, my name is Chad Ward and I'm a business agent with Teamsters Local 346. I also serve as a pipeline representative for the Teamsters. Local 346 represents the line five relocation project area and our members will be integral in the construction and maintenance of this project. First, let me state the Teamsters fully support the line five relocation project. Not only will bring with it 700 union jobs, but it will add a significant boost to the local economy. Additionally, through the five-plus years of review by both federal and state agencies, it is clear that this project was designed to ensure the environment will be protected during and after construction. With many of our members living in the project area of Bayfield, Ashland, and Iron Counties, we take very seriously our commitment to the community and the environment around the construction site. Our membership would not support this project if we didn't believe it would be done safely and in a manner that protects our land and water. Regarding the Bad River Band's February letter that prompted this hearing, I and others have grave concerns that the assertions made by the tribe could have impacts well beyond construction practices considered industry and regulatory best practices for environmental protection are cited as reasons by the tribe for why this project should not proceed. Practices that are standard use all over the country, such as timber harvesting and replanning, responsible use of heavy machinery and the use of devices such as timber matting are all identified by the Bad River Band as reasons to deny project permits. While I understand much of the opposition to this project has taken the throat against the wall and see what sticks approach to legal and regulatory objections, these claims not only do not match up with the Bad River Band's own previous construction approvals, but they are practices the band has been fine with for dozens of projects in the same area. This leaves the impression that these concerns are more based on the political views of the project than the construction method themselves. And while they are entitled to their political views, it is the job of the permitting process to determine if the laws and regulations are being followed, not weigh the political arguments. The Teamsters have a long history of working on Enbridge and other pipeline projects. We know the length Enbridge goes to protect the environment and ensure a positive impact on the communities near the infrastructure. On behalf of the Teamsters, I ask that you move forward with the permits needed to complete the line five relocation project and do so expeditiously as possible. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you for your statement. Really quickly, can we please let anyone who is registered to speak make sure that they have their first and last name so that we are able to find you in the attendees list? We have several people who only have able to find the exact person. With that said, next we will hear from Dan Olson. Please unmute your microphone before you begin your timer. It looks like Dan is not here. Let's move on to Joanne Ellis. Please unmute your microphone. It looks like Joan Ellis is not here. We'll be moving on to Jim Jones. Please unmute your microphone before we begin the timer. It looks like, it looks like Jim is not here. Next we have Jill Hartley. Can you please unmute your microphone? I see that Joan is here. We are going to be bringing you in. Please unmute your microphone. Your time starts now. Your time starts now. Please be Joan, can you please unmute your microphone?
Do. Okay, can you hear me now? My microphone is unmuted. Thank you. I'm sorry. My name is Joan Elias and I am the chair of the Natural Resources Committee of the League of Women Voters of Ashland and Bayfield Counties, Wisconsin. The League of Women Voters of Wisconsin is a nonpartisan organization with approximately 2,600 members statewide. The league operates at the state level with grassroots support from 21 local leagues like the Ashland and Bayville County Chapter. The league encourages informed and active participation in government and has been at the forefront of efforts to protect air, land, and water resources. Particularly relevant to the matter at hand today, the league advocates for water quality protection throughout the Bad River watershed and the larger Great Lakes Basin. As part of this advocacy, we promote sustainable and environmentally conscious methods for energy use to lower greenhouse gas emissions. Construction of new oil and gas infrastructure that will be rendered obsolete by the expansion of renewable sources of energy. Our local chapter especially is committed to protecting the ecologically sensitive terrain of Northern Wisconsin where the line five reroute is proposed. Members of the league who live, work, and recreate along the path of the line five reroute rely on the affected water resources for drinking water and enjoy many water-dependent recreation activities. Construction and operation of the line five reroute would harm wetlands and water bodies, impacts that are exacerbated by extreme weather events like floods that are becoming more intense and more frequent. In an effort to protect the sensitive ecosystems and watersheds along the reroute, the League of Women Voters has joined in the challenge to the Wisconsin DNR permit that greenlights the pipeline reroute project. The parties to a pending state administrative hearing are challenging the DNR's wetland and waterway permit decision as well as the DNR's decision to certify that the reroute would comply with state water quality standards. If the parties are successful and the water quality certification is invalidated, the Army Corps would lack the necessary state authorization for the federal permitting process. The league supports tribal sovereignty and treaty rights and recognizes the unique relationships the Bad River Band of Lake Superior Chippewa has with the waters and aquatic beings in Northern Wisconsin. The band has established water quality standards which are in effect under the Clean Water Act to protect those waters and aquatic beings. The Bad River Band concluded that the reroute would violate those water quality standards, a conclusion that the league respects and so should the Corps. Anything less would be an affront to the band's tribal sovereignty. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Next we will hear from Jim Jones. Please unmute your microphone before we begin the timer. It looks like Jim Jones is not here. Can we please hear from Jill Hartley? Please unmute your microphone before we begin the timer. Doing it. Okay, it looks like we have Jim Jones here. Please unmute your microphone before we begin the timer. Jim Jones, can you please unmute your microphone and say your name before we begin the timer?
Hello?
Excellent. Your time starts now.
My name is James Jones, owner of Dirt Divers Culture Resource Management. In support of the line five reroute, which takes this project with outside of the boundaries of the reservation per their original wishes of the community. As was requested. I was involved in line three reroute in Northern Minnesota and worked with a number of tribal entities in tribal communities and making sure that the route protected the resources that were along the proposed route. I'm a Leach Lake Band member and it was my tribe as well that requested that the line three be removed from that project going back in 2018, which actually took place in 2021 and continues on with the removal of the proposed line three pipe. And they continue to work with the tribe and Enbridge and other agencies involved with that, including other federal agencies besides the Corps. Corps has done its work and the last thing that is the permitting that has to be done as part of this project. I know that Corps has done this type of work, reviewed these projects with an open mind and making sure that the processes and the Ts and Is are crossed and dotted. And this project is no different than any of the others that are coming up and the ones that have been done in the past. I worked with Enbridge for a number of years and I've worked with other agencies and other organizations, including contractors to make sure that the project is done in the best way and the safest way possible. And I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Next we will hear from Jill Hartley. It looks like Jill is not here. We will be moving on to the next speaker. That will be Kim Castor. Please unmute your microphone before we begin the timer.
Good afternoon. My name's Kim Castor. I'm a member of the Bad River Band and I'm also an owner of a construction company which is called FDL Star. Our company has done extensive work with Enbridge. We have subcontract on line three and on line four removal work on Fond du Lac Reservation last year. And we also were the contractor on the log jack project this year on the Bad River Reservation. I am familiar with best management practices that will be used in construction of line five, the segment relocation project. And work will be done by a trained local indigenousness and union workforce. We know this because a project labor agreement has been signed by the Wisconsin-based contractor on this project, Enbridge and the Pipeline Trades. Construction plans do include best common management practices to control erosion like silk sensing, slope and trench breakers, erosion control blankets, and quick reseating to minimize the potential downstream impacts. The DNR includes 231 conditions in their section 401 water quality certification that protects water quality during construction, which includes waters within the reservations. And they cover erosion and settlement control, equipment use, fist spawning protections, wetland, wetland protection, invasion, invasive species protection, safety watering, restoration planning, independent environmental monitoring, water quality monitoring, and waterways. It should be noted that all of the aspects of the construction are highly regulated and controlled. That's especially true with the use of any explosives. Blasting is not uncommon during construction. Use of any explosions during construction is planned and carried out by professionals according and approved plans based on study of geology, hydrology, and underlying soil conditions. My experience with Enbridge is that they have been focused on safety, they're professional, and that they care about the environment. With that in mind, I just want to let you know that I am here to support the project moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your statement. Next we will hear from John Koch. Please unmute your microphone before we begin the timer and state your name. John Koch, can you please unmute your microphone before we start the timer and state your name?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. All right. Let's start the timer. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Would you, I mean, hello, John Cook, Indigenous Akas, O'washko Benesi, Nindigu, Ojibwe Mon, Makinak, Nanduodam, Mashkuzibi here in Bad River, Nindunjabas. Commander, first of all, I wish to dispel the perception that all Bad River members are united in opposition to line five. Most of us support the reroute effort and work in the construction trades. We desire positive dialogue with Enbridge, which would greatly benefit our community, just like Fond du Lac Band in Minnesota and Lakutera Band here in Wisconsin. I am a tribal member, live here and retired as a unique construction laborer with Luna Local 1091. I worked on numerous projects which involve the careful consideration of water quality impacts. One being the remediation of the helicopter crash site here on the reservation. I assisted with the pipeline anomaly repair on line five, again here on the reservation. In addition, I was on the construction team that erected two cell towers here in Bad River. In each case, we had to take proper measures to account for discharges off the sites. I'm aware of other projects here in Bad River that had to account for water quality. The Wellness Center and infrastructure expansion necessitated the installation of an eight-mile natural gas line, which was needed to heat the complex with Olympic-sized swimming pool. Roadways and bridges have been rehabbed, replaced in Ashland County, including US Highway Two improvements. The Bear Trek Creek Bridge is proposed for rehabilitation. Recently, the Log Jack Project at the Meander mitigated explosion to help protect the pipeline. Lastly, I'm aware of ongoing home building rehabbing efforts on the reservation with wells and septic systems, repair installations. Hundreds of projects have been granted stormwater permits by the Wisconsin DNR over the past five years in Ashland, Bayfield, and Iron Counties, totaling more than 2,000 estimated disturbed areas. All projects necessarily have temporary construction impacts, which is realistic. Those impacts are mitigated by best construction practices and the common sediment controls we've all used and seen at construction sites. None of these aforementioned projects could have been built with the restrictions now being suggested for line five. I support this project and I look forward to it moving ahead. Make which, thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Next we will hear from Patricia Hamel. Please unmute, please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Your time starts now.
All right. Buju Anin, Indigenous Akas, Patricia Hamel. Hello, my name is Patricia Hamel. I live in Northern Wisconsin, but not in the Bad River watershed. I am not indigenous, but respect the people of the Bad River Band and the unique lands and waters they have occupied for centuries. I am an attorney in private practice. I am not being paid to testify. I do not stand to profit from the construction of the line five reroute. The contents of line five provide no benefit to Wisconsin. However, I've spent quite a lot of time in the Bad River watershed, particularly near the Tyler Forbes River, where Guebigit Cackanite wanted to locate an open pit iron mine there. GTAC dropped the project 10 years ago when they discovered more wetlands than expected. The band has jurisdiction over the reservation as well as rights to use and occupy the seceded territory, which extends to Antigo where I live. They did not enter into the easement, but they chose not to renew, where Enbridge has been trespassing. The Federal Bureau of Indian Affairs did that at a time when many tribes had little or no ability to control what happened on their lands. Now they have EPA authorities in state, but only on the reservation. Yet the US government still has a trust responsibility to the Bad River people. I have been following bands dealing with Enbridge for over five years now and have also dealt with Enbridge's activities in the southern part of Wisconsin. Enbridge has a long history of Clean Water Act violations over the last 15 years or more, from line six B in Michigan to Dakota Access, which Enbridge owns 28% of, to line three in Minnesota. Do a few hours of testimony, but it was clear that the studies and findings provided by Enbridge and the Army Corps were inadequate and insufficient to provide any assurance that this reroute will not significantly impair the Bad River watershed and the tribe's water quality standards. I was shocked to hear several experts who testified on behalf of the tribe say that Enbridge had provided new information yesterday about the water crossings, expected length of blasting, and the aerial survey of water bodies that could not see through trees. Several of the speakers stated that violations of the tribe water quality standards were inevitable, given the construction practices proposed by Enbridge. Characteristics of the watershed, the steep slopes, the different types of streams and rivers, and the very limited basis of the information that was provided specifically only about the Bad River and only about water bodies that were not close to the reservation. So I don't think the Corps has enough information to guarantee that they won't violate the tribe's water quality standards. And the permit should be denied, just as what happened with the Fond du Lac Band and the Polymet Mine. Thank you for your time and please consider our testimony.
Thank you for your statement. Next we will hear from Elizabeth Ward. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer.
Hello. Good afternoon. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Your time starts now.
Okay, thanks. Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Ward and I'm the Wisconsin Chapter Director of the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club is a national grassroots organization that amplifies the power of our members and supporters to defend their rights to a healthy world and to ensure a safe, livable climate for future generations. Sierra Club and its members work to promote energy conservation and clean energy alternatives to fossil fuel infrastructure projects. The Sierra Club is opposed to new oil pipeline construction in Wisconsin because it would endanger the state's waters and entrench fossil fuel infrastructure for generations to come, which would promote continued reliance on fossil fuels rather than energy conservation and adjust transition to clean energy alternatives. Sierra Club has approximately 12,000 members throughout the state, many of whom live, work, and recreate near the planned line five reroute and other line five segments that are within and adjacent to the Bad River watershed. Our members visit Capra Falls State Park, hiking camp in the Shawamagan Nicolay Forest, paddle the rivers of the area, and otherwise explore Lake Superior. Dozens of our members live in the Lake Superior watershed and rely on clean water in the area to drink, garden, cook, and otherwise use. If Enbridge is allowed to proceed with its planned line five reroute, it would cause catastrophic harm to the surrounding wetlands and waterways, including the tribal waters of the Bad River Band of the Lake Superior Chippewa. Members of the Sierra Club rely on and seek to protect these environmentally and culturally important waters for generations to come. This is why the Sierra Club joined as a party of the state legation challenging the Wisconsin DNR's decision to authorize Enbridge's line five reroute. Sierra Club is asking Wisconsin Administrative Law Judge to review and ultimately revoke the state's unlawfully issued permit and invalidate the state water quality certification for the line five reroute. A decision by the Army Corps on Enbridge's pending federal permit application for the reroute before the conclusion of the state administrative hearing on the same matter would therefore be premature. The Bad River Band of the Lake Superior Chippewa is a sovereign tribal nation and a neighboring jurisdiction affected by the Enbridge's planned line five reroute. The Bad River Band has determined the project result in violations to its water quality standards. The band is the only entity with the knowledge and expertise to make such a determination, which the Army Corps should respect and defer to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your statement. Next we will hear from Andrew Spicola. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Your time starts now.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Andrew Spicola and I work with, and today I'm speaking on behalf of the band's Natural Resources Department. Our department has concluded through reviews of this project's potential discharges and their effects on the waters of the Bad River Reservation. We evaluated a broad array of materials and looked over data and documents related to the hydrologically connected watersheds involved in this project. Though there was new information introduced just yesterday, we did not have time to review. Regardless, based on the analysis and those analyses of other experts in various fields, Regardless, based on the analysis and those analyses of other experts in various fields, the band has concluded that the discharges under this proposed project will violate the band's water quality standards. These discharges will degrade water quality and compromise the integrity of the ecosystems that the Bad River people, their treaty rights, and their culture depend on. There are no conditions that are sufficient to ensure that these water quality requirements are upheld, particularly for waters upstream or adjacent to those within reservation boundaries. It is clear that the discharges associated with this proposed project will lead to violations of anti-degradation provisions, impair designated uses, and breach both narrative and numeric criteria set to protect them. This proposed project as currently designed lacks enforceable conditions or corrective actions strong enough to prevent these harms. For example, the reroute will cross underneath the White River just off reservation via horizontal directional drilling, which will need to be permitted by the Corps, as this is a Section 10 navigable waterway under the Rivers and Harbors Act. This proposed HDD is the longest and deepest being proposed for this project. This increases the risk of inadvertent releases. When HDD issues arise, including inadvertent release during boring, the proposed plan would result in that boring being halted and abandoned, and new bores initiated, exacerbating water quality effects downstream. Additionally, the proposed project will also cross tributaries to the White River and the lands and wetlands connected to the White River. The proposed project's activities will affect the water quality in multiple ways. The White River is one of few locations that are critical for the spawning of Lake Superior sturgeon in the basin. Additionally, there are many culturally significant sites along the White River, sites that are of historical importance to the story of Bad River, her people today, and the intergenerational relationships you heard about this morning. The health of the Bad River Reservation and surrounding communities and the health of Lake Superior as a whole is at stake. It is our right and our duty to protect it. Megwich.
Thank you for your statement. Next, we will hear from Martin Stoner. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Looks like Martin Stoner is not here, so we will be moving on. Next, we have Dawn Goodwind. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Dawn does not seem to be here. Up next, we have Matthew Bork. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer.
Greetings. You can hear me?
I can hear you. Your time starts now.
Thank you so much. My name is Matthew Bork. That's B as in Boy, O R K E. I would like to start out today by thanking the members of Bad River Tribe, not just for coming forward, but for taking action on improving our water quality standards for all human beings, the states, and our nation as a whole. First, I'm going to briefly go over some of the inaccuracies and the limited information that's even been brought forward. There is a large difference. Enbridge had mentioned nearly 500 water tests. When you're looking at water tests, there is a very large difference between a $50 test, a $500 test, $1,000 test, $2,000 test. You heard Bad River speak about the mercury that has been a problem from pre-established projects that had been previously done. I do not believe that the water tests include other types of contaminants, which include benzene and other types of contamination that have been previously done in that area. Continued construction and release with just minimal of sediment nets is not anywhere near sufficient, nor is water testing to even provide any bit of information that's limited to things like CAFOs. Are efficient to actually say that they have done even proper water testing to bring to the table. The well point water withdrawal is also incorrect that they brought forward. They talked about rather than well point only putting in entrenched water withdrawals, which is not efficient, and there's no way that they're going to dig, de-water, retrench in eight hours, and that's also inaccurate. When it gets to horizontal directional drilling, inadvertent returns are only talked about what happens above ground. There's a lot of product that happens below ground to where they're losing. They're talking about only looking at the surface, and that is certainly not efficient. When it comes to metal piling, that starts localized earthquakes. The disturbances are vast and extreme. It can break apart underground plumes, aquifers, as been mentioned in the past. And finally, when it's talking about the blasting, it's rebuttal to what the experts said and compared sticking dynamite into the rocks as should be compared as fluffing the rocks. If you were to drill a hole in my spine, in my body, and put a stick of dynamite, would you consider that fluffing my body? Thank you for your time. The permits are insufficient and need to be denied. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your statement. Next, we will hear from Melanie Connors. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Looks like we don't have any Melanie, so we'll be moving on to Noah Saperstein. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Noah, we will be moving on to James Crittenden. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Looks like James is not here. We'll be moving on to Nokomas Adupwin. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer.
Bojou, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Your time starts now.
Bojou, Dinwiddie Maginadug. Dinwiddie Maginadug. I am here to say that this is not needed. How many times do we need to tell you that? How many times do we need to tell you that it will hurt? It will devastate ecology, the economics? This cannot happen. When does no mean no? How many times do we need to say no? When a child, when we talk to a child and we tell them if somebody is touching you, no means no. Isn't that what it means? Are we just kidding? Or does just no just mean only sometimes? Only when the indigenous say no, then it doesn't count? What, or you've listened for how long? Eight, 10 hours of everything? And you still want to have this go through? It's completely unfathomable that any of you can sleep at night knowing that you will be causing genocide upon a local community? All those who live, eat, breathe the Great Lakes? As a Canadian corporation, you should not be here in the United States, much less on indigenous lands? So I'm telling you to get out. Stop what you're doing and get out. Thanks.
Thank you for your statement. Next, we'll hear from Emily Park. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Emily Park, please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer.
Hi, my name is Emily Park.
Hello, welcome. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Park and I am the Co-Executive Director of 350 Wisconsin, a statewide organization based in Madison that mobilizes grassroots power to promote sustainable practices and clean renewable energy in Wisconsin communities. 350 Wisconsin works with tribes, landowners, environmental advocates, and others to prevent new oil pipeline projects in Wisconsin due to the significant adverse impacts of oil pipeline construction and operation, including environmental and public health impacts of climate change. 350 Wisconsin has hundreds of members throughout Wisconsin, including in Ashland and Iron Counties, where the Line 5 reroute would be constructed within the hydrologically complex and sensitive Bad River watershed. 350 Wisconsin's members rely on and use many of the water resources that will be affected by Enbridge's planned reroute of Line 5. Our membership includes farmers, anglers, boaters, and others who depend on Wisconsin's healthy ecosystems for their livelihoods, hobbies, and lives. Rising water temperatures, increased precipitation, flash droughts and floods, and other well-studied and documented climate change trends already threaten these and other water resources in Wisconsin. 350 Wisconsin is concerned about the harmful impact Enbridge's planned Line 5 reroute would have on these vital resources if the Army Corps issues a federal permit. 350 Wisconsin is a member of a client group that is challenging the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources' decision to issue Enbridge a wetland and waterway permit for this project. This administrative proceeding includes a challenge to the state's water quality certification, which is a prerequisite for the Corps to grant Enbridge the federal permit it needs to construct reroute. As a result of our state administrative challenge, the Wisconsin DNR's determination to grant the water quality certification is not considered final and may be invalidated at the close of the pending administrative hearing. When it comes to the question of whether the reroute will violate the Bad River Band's water quality standards, 350 Wisconsin defers to the band and the band alone to make that determination. 350 Wisconsin respectfully asks the Army Corps to do the same, except the band's expert judgment that the reroute, if permitted, would violate the Bad River Band's water quality standards. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Next, we will hear from Josh Whitebird. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. It looks like Josh is not here. We'll be moving on to Brandon Lund. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer.
Brandon Lundey.
Thank you. Your time starts now.
Hi, I am Brandon Lundey with Michaels. I'm going to talk about blasting on the pipeline right away today. It's not what you've seen in the movies where you see a large explosion. There's a ground up people of about two to five feet, about five foot wide along the length of the trench. If anybody's had the opportunity to see it, it's not very exciting. There's a great deal of careful planning prior to any of these operations. Blasting professionals that are properly licensed by agencies will oversee all of these operations, have full control over the planning, and need approvals prior to using this. Any required permits are obtained prior to these activities. It is very important that safeguards are in place to ensure that no one is within the zone. Reviews are done, physical checks, and then air horns. As a company, we have recently blasted within 20 feet of residential structures and existing in-service gas pipelines with no issues. Numerous factors are considered and can be altered when blasting within sensitive areas, like I just mentioned. Drilling and blasting pattern, types of blasting agents, and the goal is always minimizing the pounds per cubic yard of material. Prior to coming to a project to blast, we review the company's specifications as well as permit conditions, working with our preferred partners to create a project-specific plan to ensure strict adherence to the project requirements and any permits. In the event that additional precautions are needed, when in proximity to sensitive areas, we can use blasting mats to further reduce impacts. Seismographs are also utilized to ensure that peak particle velocities are met for each blast and confirm that all blasted here to the United States Bureau of Mines inch-per-second limitations. The crews utilize John Henry equipment to come out and drill to identify the areas that require blasting. The purpose of the physical location via these mechanical methods is to ensure that only the areas that are truly needed to be blasted will occur on the project. Once they're identified and all notices have been given and the checks are complete, predetermined holes are drilled. Then blasting material is inserted and capped. The quantity of material is outlined within the plan and will be minimized based on the required depth. Wiring of all the holes will be completed and a trench will be blasted approximately five feet wide. Blasting is very common practice on the pipeline. If you were to view a typical pipeline blast, you'd see a small upheaval of earth, again approximately two to five feet of crowned earth. The adjacent ground on either side of that desired width will not be affected and no movement outside the area will be observed. It's my ask that you respectfully approve the permits after all the due diligence for the Line 5 relocation project. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Next, we'll hear from Stephen Kenny. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer.
Hello, Stephen Kenny.
Hello, Stephen. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Kenny. I also work for Michaels Corporation, who is currently under contract to perform the horizontal directional drilling for the lines. Horizontal directional drilling is commonly used practice for all types of varied utilities, and it was pioneered to reduce the environmental impact of installation of below-grade utilities. We regularly use horizontal directional drilling to install below-grade municipal water lines that provide drinking water to local communities. We've successfully installed thousands of underground utilities over the past 30 years across the world. Horizontal directional drilling is a fairly simple methodology, which uses tooling to drill an annular space that utilities can then be pulled into, alleviating the need to mechanically excavate the area and cause a more significant impact to the environment and the general public. The drilling fluid is used to return the mining material to the surface and to maintain the competency of the hole prior to utility installation. Inadvertent returns of the drilling fluid is a common public concern, but this concern is largely misplaced and based on incorrect information. The drilling fluid is comprised almost entirely of bitonite, a naturally occurring clay, and water. It is NSF 60 approved, which is the national standard for drinking water health and safety. The same fluid is used in the installation of water wells and is commonly used in drinking water treatment facilities. Inadvertent returns occur when the annular pressure of the drilling fluid overcomes the ability of the overburden to contain the pressure. This is most likely to occur near the entry and exit points of the drill, where there is the least amount of overburden. This is mitigated by installing large diameter conductor casing from the surface to sufficient depths of competent geotechnical layers capable of withstanding the drilling fluid pressure. Michaels has numerous additional mitigation strategies to prevent inadvertent returns, one of which is drilling the profile from both sides and intersecting the two drills, reducing the downhole pressure of the drilling fluid, which further reduces the likelihood of inadvertent returns, which is especially useful in sensitive environmental areas. Monitoring of the drilling fluid pressure and volume is continually performed during drilling operations to ensure full returns of the drilling fluid back to the drilling rigs and to detect any loss of returns or drop in pressure. Containment measures are always on-site to contain any inadvertent returns if they should occur to prevent any widespread impact to the area, again in the unlikely event of occurrence. I hope that this information is useful to the general public and believe that the installation of the pipeline via horizontal directional drilling can be safely performed with no lasting impact to the local environment, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your statement. Next, we'll hear from Stephen Gregory. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Stephen Gregory, can you please unmute your microphone and state your name? Stephen Gregory, can you please unmute your microphone and state your name?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Your time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Gregory. I support this project, and I represent Gregory General Contracting that will be the proposed blasting contractor for the Line 5 project. We perform drilling and blasting operations across the country and specialize in close proximity to existing underground utilities and above-ground structures. We regularly perform blasting on multi-mile pipeline projects paralleling existing gas lines less than 20 feet through wetlands and water bodies. Like he touched on earlier, we like Brandon touched on earlier, we use our John Henrys to go through and test the areas to determine where the rock is at in the right of way. After that, we set into a pattern. After the pattern is established, talk to the drillers, find out how much rock is in the ground, and then we go from there to determine how many cartridges we will load into the hole. And from there, it is filled with stemming material. That material is used to direct the energy into the rock. Again, it's very commonly done across the country with what we do installing natural gas pipeline projects, so that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. We'll be taking a quick 10-minute break and allow any speakers who missed their opportunity to rename themselves the proper name so that we can call them, and they can then present their statement. We'll see you in about 10 minutes. Thank you. And welcome back from the break. We are going to continue from where we left off, going from the list. So next, we will be hearing from Terrence McGowan. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Looks like Terrence is not here. We'll be moving on to the next name. That will be Dan Olson. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Dan does not seem to be here. We'll be moving on to Jill Hartlev. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. We'll be moving on to Martin Stoner. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. It looks like Martin is not here. We'll be moving on to Dawn Goodwin. Please state your name and unmute your microphone before we begin the timer. Dawn, we see you here. Can you please unmute your microphone and state your name? Dawn Goodwin, it seems that you are on hold. Can you please unmute your microphone and state your name so that we can begin? Okay, as to our roles, if you are unresponsive, we will be moving on. You will be giving up your position. We're going to be moving on to Melanie Connors. Can you please unmute your microphone and state your name so that we can begin your session? All right, it looks like Melanie is not here. We're going to be moving on to Noah Saperstein. Please unmute your microphone and state your name before we begin the timer. Noah, can you please unmute your microphone and state your name so that we can begin the timer? As per roles, anybody who is unresponsive will forfeit their position. We are going to be moving on to James Crittenden. If you are here, can you please unmute your microphone and state your name so we can begin the timer? Okay, moving on, we have Josh Whitebird. If you are here, can you please state your name so that we can begin the timer? It looks like Noah Saperstein has just arrived. Can you please unmute your microphone and state your name so that we can begin the timer?
Bonjour. I don't have any comments at this time. Rickless Band of Linkspur Indians or Thomas Kavakong has submitted formal comments to the Corps regarding the proposed project, and we have no new comments at this time, though we continue to support the needs of our relatives over in Mosca, TV or Bad River as they continue to protect their home lands. Bonjour.
Thank you for your statement. We're going to take a quick look and see if anyone else is here. Next, we have Terry McGowan. Can you please state your name so that we can begin your timer?
Good afternoon. I'm Terry McGowan, President Business Manager, the International Unit of Operating Engineers Local 139. We represent over 11,000 Wisconsin operating engineers, including those who will work at line here to speak to you in support of the project and clarify some mischaracterizations that have been made and will affect letters submitted to the EPA and US Army Corps of Engineers. The members of Local 139 are the better women who build our schools, bridges, office buildings, gas and propane infrastructure, broadband networks, renewable energy facilities, and countless other infrastructure projects that allow our state to function. We know how to safely and efficiently build critical infrastructure. It has been alleged that the use of timber matting and heavy machinery will increase discharge as a reason why water quality will be impacted. However, if you visit the EPA's own web page titled Forestry Best Management Practices in Watersheds, the EPA lists as a recommended technique the use of timber mats. The Wisconsin DNR and their Forest Management Practice Fact Sheet states wood mats provide surfaces that protect wetlands during hauling or forwarding operations. The use of timber matting is the preferred construction mitigation pressure measure to protect wetlands and watersheds. Local 139 members take great care to ensure that the equipment needed to build a project leaves the smallest environmental footprint possible, and the use of timber mats helps us accomplish that goal. I appreciate and respect the desire of the Bad River Band to remove Line 5 from their reservation. However, it appears you are being asked to substantially alter basic construction practice, which follow environmental guidance from the agencies like the EPA and Wisconsin DNR in a way that would make nearly impossible for the development of any kind of move forward across northern Wisconsin. In the last five years, the Wisconsin DNR has issued stormwater permits to 120 feet projects in Ashland, Bayfield, and Iron Counties. The Bad River Band itself has approved the US Highway improvement. They have approved the US Highway 2 improvements, the replacement of a bridge over Bad River, and recently began work on the installation of over eight-mile natural gas line for their wellness center. None of these projects would have been possible under the standards suggested for the Line 5 relocation project. I ask you to recognize that the proven environmental best practice that Enbridge has proposed in their permit application, I also ask you to consider the additional 231 conditions of the Wisconsin DNR has included in their water quality permits. If you do, I think you will agree with me that Enbridge and the members of Local 139 could construct this project safely and in a manner that protects our environment. I urge you to promptly approve the necessary permits for the Line 5 relocation project and move forward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you again to all participants for your time, your input and cooperation throughout today's hearing. And there is no more speakers registered to make verbal statements at this time. The hearing will conclude at 7:00 PM Central Standard Time to accommodate the public. In the event for more speakers coming up or registering, you will be able to make verbal statements throughout this time.